Okay, good evening, folks. This is April 28th, 2021. As the preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I am the Chair for the Newberry Planning Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Any board member, when your name is called, please respond in the affirmative. Larry, Mary?
Larry.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, Larry. George Morse.
Yes.
Thank you, George. Leslie Matthews.
Oh, you muted, Leslie.
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody Knight.
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. Mary Stone.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. How staff, when I call your name, please also respond in the room. Arthur Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you, Martha. Emily Noble?
Yes.
Thank you, Emily. Anticipated speakers present this on the agenda. Please respond in the affirmative. Stephen Sawyer?
Here.
Thank you, Stephen. Vincent Godin?
Here.
Thank you, Vincent. Bill Strom?
Here.
Thank you. Josh Childs?
Here.
Thank you, Josh. Joe Strummer?
I'm sorry, here.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening. This is April 28th, 2021. Open meeting of the Newberry Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's orders suspends the requirement of the meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newberry Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http-zoom.us and enter meeting ID 832-7141-3056 or by calling 1-922056099 and entering the ID number when prompted. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the main meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some grounds for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate minute meeting, minute meetings. Yes, thank you. I, as the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of members inviting each by name. Provide comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the new button on your or please toggle six on your phone to mute or unmute when you are speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that will help generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you. State your name before speaking. Or members wish to engage with discussions with other members, please do so through me. Taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With regards to public comment, there'll be an opportunity for public commenting during the public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to come comment and or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function of video conference. To raise your hand, hover over the bottom of your Zoom window, blow the photo gallery and click on the yellow hand that appears. If you don't see the yellow hand, click on the participants buttons. A list of participants will open and display on the right. At the bottom of the participants area, you'll see the option to click to raise your hand. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by going to the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your keypad. And then again to mute and unmute at star six. I will then allow questions and comments from board members from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they're listed, which is determined by the order in which people click the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, participant, or his representative representative opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those with raised hand column and again afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical electronic submissions of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record and again, the participant applicant representatives will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not been addressed. Each vote taken in this meeting will be done by. Okay, let's just pop over here for a second. And this is our meeting tonight is a public hearing, which is continuance of two and eight Old Point Road site plan review. And let's see. It is, it is a continuance. So first I'll start off by asking the applicant or any of those representatives if they have any new information or materials for us.
Hello, Steve Sawyer from DCI. I believe the only new materials, I believe that the Board of Health may have sent, the Health Department may have sent some information along to Martha. And regarding, I think regarding the port of body use from the Health Department. And I think that's, I can defer to Vincent. He's been diligently working in the back or in the foreground and he may know of some other information that was submitted to the town.
Vincent, is there anything else new for the board?
No, I think that was it. It was just an email about from the Health Inspector kind of approving the, the plans as she saw them.
Then I'd like to ask the board members if they have any questions before we review our draft decision.
I have one quick question.
Go ahead, Leslie.
For Vincent, did the Health Inspector actually come down and do a physical? Or was it just through the plans submitted to the board?
I like it was. Oh, go ahead, Beau. Beau's been involved in this. The Health Inspector, so I'm probably the best person to answer this. I spoke with her. We submitted the plans a couple of weeks ago and then we had a phone call with Suzie Maitland, our partner and executive chef, walking through the entire plan together. I answered any questions that she had. She initially had submitted an approval to Peter, the building inspector, and then I had reached out to her this week asking her if she wouldn't mind doing the same thing to with Martha, just emailing her approving the, the plan as, as we went over it.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions from board members? Okay, I think that we'd like to do now is probably go to our draft decision. And, and we'll concentrate on the findings and conditions and I'm going to do this tag team with Larry Murphy, Vice Chair. Martha, can you pop that up on the screen?
Yes, I can.
So all the board members have received this and had an opportunity to read through. I just want to go through. Is that correct, Woody?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Perfect. So the first page, does anyone have any questions or comments on the first page?
Sorry. Did not mean to do that.
It's okay. Ah, gotcha. And I'll get the door.
Okay.
In Martha, the two items highlighted and read, any comments with regards to that?
No, I just, I was just filling that out, you know, based on a potential vote. So that will get filled in after, after the boat board renders a decision.
Beautiful. No comments on page one. Let's go to page two. Any comments or corrections on page two?
I had a couple of notes on this, if I may.
Please do.
Um, first of all, there, there were some back and forth about the actual number of patrons. The the original site plan review narrative said 164. I think at the select board meeting, it was mentioned 162, but Vince has confirmed that it is 163 patrons, which is actually consistent with the drawings and not the narrative that was originally submitted. That was a change. And then the other thing that I, I added on here, there were a few questions that came up about the traffic flow. So I'm suggesting here that it might be beneficial to note that the traffic, the direction of traffic through the site was changed from the original proposal. So I've highlighted that in yellow. And just to read the traffic flow through the site will be one way. The original proposal showed vehicles entering the site from Plum Island Boulevard and exiting onto Old Point Road based on discussion during the public hearing process, traffic flow was reversed. So the vehicular access to the site will be off of Old Point Road via 15 foot driveway. And vehicles will exit the site onto Plum Island Boulevard via a 22 foot wide driveway. So that's just a suggestion for the board's consideration to, to see if we might clarify that.
Martha, is that consistent with the, the idea that most patrons coming out would be heading in, you know, exiting in that, in that direction?
Right. So this was consistent with the idea that some number of patrons will be coming from off island. So rather than trying to cross, you know, cross Plum Island Boulevard as people are leaving, they can actually turn left at the intersection and go into the site and then come out and turn right and go directly off island again. And this was, this was supported by the traffic transportation director at MVP C.
Okay, if I could just go down board members to make sure that folks are comfortable with which Larry?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Wonderful. George, your thoughts?
I, I'm fine, yes.
Great, thank you. Leslie, your thoughts?
Yes, I'm good with it.
Okay, Woody, your thoughts, sir?
It's good.
Beautiful. And Mary?
Also.
Okay, great. With regards to the color temperature, that's indicative that this will be LED lighting. Is that correct, Martha?
Um, yeah, I think, I think it's LED lighting. Vince has confirmed that he's there. Okay with the limitation of 3,000.
Okay, yes, comfortable with that. And it, the plan is to have all LED and, and you know, dark sky compliant lighting.
Sky compliant, wonderful. Um, any other comments or questions in the remainder of page two?
The only other thing here was crossed out last call at 10:30, since that really is more the purview of the select board and issuing a liquor license as opposed to this. So this address is only the hours of operation. And I had mistakenly crossed out seven days a week. I think maybe later, but that, that's here. So it's 11 to 11 during the summer season, seven days a week.
Okay, great. Now, the highlighted last line of the, of that Martha, we have more with regards to operation, number of employees, music. Do you want to just touch on that just so we can make the board comfortable with that?
Um, I guess it was really kind of a question to the board whether, you know, whether that, that should be addressed here. We've, we've been told that the number of employees is going to be five, I believe, there are five parking spaces for employees. Some of the other things might actually also be more appropriate for the purview of the select board in the future, such as music and so on. So I don't know if the board members want to address any of, any of that.
Ask Larry, do you have any questions or thoughts on that, sir?
Well, just to Martha's point, we need to remember we're not the only authority here. The Board of Selectmen will be issuing a common victual license, restaurant license. They'll be issuing a liquor license presumably. And I, if there is any sort of entertainment I think we probably want to hear from the proponent about that, but the applicant rather. They'll likely have to apply to the select board for an entertainment license. And these, these licenses are all renewable annually. So I don't know that we need to get into those in any great detail. Those are the types of things I think would be addressed in those licenses issued by the select board. But in any event, I'm sorry, Pete, in any event, any concerns about that probably would be better in the condition section rather than here.
Perfect. Thank you, Larry. George, your thoughts on Larry's comments?
You know, I do the issue of security, I think, as a private matter of the operator, owner, operators of the applicant. I would not want them to disclose online or within the document their security plan. That's just not our business. That's their business. Thanks.
Thank you, George. Woody, your thoughts, sir?
Well, George and Larry just covered everything, any concern I have with this particular matter. It's, it, the security and the music and the number of employees that all, excuse me, on the number of employees, the security and the music falls under, doesn't fall under our purview. So that would be the selection that would do that.
Leslie, any thoughts?
Yeah, my only thoughts are I'd like a little clarification on the, what is projected to be the number of employees working per shift. And if there's only five parking spaces where they would be forwarded to that different location.
So with regards to the language here, do you have any concerns with that?
Um, yeah, I'm just concerned. It's like five parking spaces for employees and having a long history in hospitality industry, there are always more than five, five employees on shift at time. And then those that come for the different shifts, so there's the transfer over. Where would they be allowed to park to come on to shift?
Let's see, Vince, do you want to answer that question just so?
Yeah, I can address that. If there, if for any reason or during the, the changeover, there was any issues with the rest of the lot being full, we do have directly across the street, the, the store that has a, has about 30 or 35 commercial parking spaces available that we would make available for any employees if needed, if there was any issue. So, so we definitely will not, you know, want our employees wandering around looking for a parking space. There will always be something.
In regards to that as well, I mean, how many? What, what do you visualize as staff on shift, on every shift? Because you'll probably have at least two, two and a half shifts per day, depending on the hours that you want to be open.
I, that is, that is above my pay grade. I don't know if Beau or Josh want to, want to address that, that a little bit more. Since.
This is because, you know, it takes time for, you know, the cash out and then the, the one shift that's on and the other shift to be able to get into a parking facility. So that they're not, you know, kind of left out to.
Correct. No, I, I mean, that would definitely get addressed with, 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 I guess, what I would call the, the employee spots that will make available at, at, at the store where we have, you know, parking for our employees as well at, at that store. So that, that would get, get handled that way. And then we could have them move them back if needed or whatnot.
And, and if I could ask just one more quick question, this is just, it's a safety issue. When your employees are parked across the street and they have to, and in their shift is done, will you be enforcing like a buddy system? So that nobody leaves the premises alone.
I can have Beau address that situation. I will say though, that if they did leave, they would be walking along the, the lighted main street in, in our parking lot that is very well lit with cameras as, as well. But Beau, do you have a comment about that? No, probably. Yeah, yes. Um, we own a few restaurants and that's a policy of, of all of our restaurants that no employee can leave at night without another employee or a manager escort. And we always know where those employees are going.
Great, thanks.
That's a company-wide policy.
Yeah, I, and I, I'm a very big advocate of that policy and all your, your service will be tip certified.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, any comments with regards to this last component on page two?
No, Larry actually clarified my two issues. However, I just want to ask Beau, wouldn't it make more sense to have enough parking spaces on, on the site for employees? So if they wouldn't have to scare out on someplace else, then you wouldn't have this whole buddy system security problem that Leslie has raised.
Well, again, I, I think that, um, that's a great question, but, um, with, we're going to be, staffing will be weather dependent, business, business dependent. And I think the only time that we're really going to run into any kind of issue would be on, on these changeovers that we're talking about. And if that should happen, I mean, we can always be able to bring those cars back when we slow down and, and, and they can, you know, leave after their cash out, they can leave into our parking lot. We could just bring the cars back over to the parking lot once it slows down.
If I could just interject on what Mary just said, that if you increase the parking on site for the employees, you decrease the parking on site for customers. And that is defeats the purpose of, you know, what the business is. That's my own personal opinion. And like I said, after being in the industry for such a long time. So it is not an unusual thing for off-site parking to, but the, I like, I'm very pleased to hear that the buddy system is in place and that's how you're going to handle it.
Okay, good. I'm glad that Beau was able to say, answer that concern. So continuing on with the draft on page, so we will be be moving that Martha?
Yeah, put a strike through, through that.
Okay, so let's go to, yes, George?
Yeah, I just had one more comment on security. I would imagine the applicant will be dealing with the police department and laying out all the security issues with them so that they have at access if necessary. You know, where cameras are located, you know, where everything else related to security is located. Would you agree to that?
Vince?
Definitely. We, we've in the past, actually, on numerous occasions, helped the police at that intersection and in front of our store, providing them video of, and, and other things as, as, as needed. So we've worked closely with them on, on a number of times over the years.
Yeah, I imagine had. So thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you, George. Um, all right, page three, let's see. Do we have any questions or comment from board members on page three?
I had one, one, one correction that was pointed out to me, highlighted in blue here is February 3rd that the public hearings opened, not January.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, and we just need to clean up the owner as manager. Okay, that's done. Any questions from any board members on page three? Great. Let's move on to page four. Any questions or comments on with regards to page four? Martha, just some corrections on dates?
Corrections on, on dates. And actually, the, the site review rendering package was actually had two dates on at the cover sheet was January 5th and the drawings themselves were December 28th, 2020. So I just added the January 5th date from the cover sheet.
Um, and.
Actually, Martha, the, I think that final trying to see the revision dates on, uh, I think we had a, on one of the plans, we had an additional revision, I think.
On one of the renderings?
No, and one of the, the C101. Oh, no, you got it. All right. Yeah. March 20.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And just our emails and correspondence. Okay, let's move on to page five then.
Actually, some additional emails here. And I crossed out, I left the waiver request section, but crossed out the other language and just added, the applicant has requested no waivers from the site plan review submission requirements and procedures, which I believe is correct.
Okay.
I see Steve and Vince nodding.
Yes. Okay, then we just have some corrections with regards to language under the findings.
Yeah, the first two, to just make the, the, the language structure, sentence structure consistent with the others. And I did also note that the plans identify one existing 24 inch caliper tree to remain and be protected.
Um, any comments from board members on page five? Let me, George, I mean, sorry, Larry?
Just one second, if I may. Uh, no, I have nothing.
George?
None.
Thank you. Leslie?
Nothing.
Great. Woody?
No, I do not.
Thank you, Woody. Mary?
No.
Okay, let's continue on to page six. All right. Um, so I'm, I'm going to have Larry drive from conditions of approval. So Larry, I'll have you take it from here.
All right, Pete, you want me to go through them each separately and?
Yes, and then we can get there any holes.
All right. Yeah. So I'll, I'll read the conditions of approval and then ask any members as, as I go through. If you want any discussion on any of these, please just say hold and then we'll come back to it. Okay? So conditions of approval, in accordance with section 97-985, site plan review approval is granted subject to the following conditions. A, site plan approval by the planning board shall not be construed as approval from any other board, commission, official, or department. The applicant is responsible for obtaining all required approvals and permits for the proposed project. B, approval is contingent on final approval by all other relevant boards, commissions, and agencies of the town. Any approval which imposes conditions inconsistent with the site plan approval shall require a revision of the site plan. A request for such revision must be submitted in writing to the planning board. C, a pre-construction meeting with the planning director, the planning board's engineering consultant, the conservation agent, and other representatives of the town shall be held prior to the commencement of site work. The limit of work shall be clearly identified prior to the pre-construction conference. Any work beyond this limit within, without prior approval shall be caused for immediate enforcement action. D, a detailed construction schedule shall be provided to the planning director at or before the pre-construction conference. And the planning director shall be notified of any changes to the schedule as site work and construction proceed. E, the planning board reserves the right for itself and its agents to enter the site at any time for the duration of the site plan approval to determine compliance therewith. F, construction inspections shall be carried out by an agent designed, designated by the planning board. And the costs of all such inspections shall be borne by the applicant. If said inspection, inspections find that work is not being done in conformance with the approved plan, the board may suspend the site plan review approval until the work is in question is repaired or take any other action the board deems appropriate to encourage compliance with the approved plans in all respects and to enforce compliance if necessary, all in the sole discretion of the planning board. G, construction activity shall be limited to the hours between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM inclusive. G, construction activity shall be limited to the hours between seven AM and five PM inclusive Monday through Friday, and if weekend hours are needed between eight AM and two PM inclusive on Saturday. There shall be no construction activity on Sundays. H, exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant shielded in designed to direct light downward in to prevent spillover of light off the the project site. There shall be no pole mounted light fixtures, the color temperature of the light bulb shall be no higher than three thousand K. I, summer hours for this for the facility from Patriots Day to Columbus Day will be limited to the hours between eleven AM and eleven PM inclusive. And I have a hard time reading on I, I I'm having a hard time reading on my copy. Okay, so seven days a week, I believe, is highlighted in blue. During the off-season between Columbus Day and Patriots Day, hours will be limited to the hours uh, between eleven AM and eleven PM inclusive on weekends in between four PM and eleven PM inclusive on weekdays. And we've struck out, as was previously discussed last call. Uh, parking on the prem- on the property will be accessory will be accessory solely to the proposed resident or restaurant use and shall not be used for any other purpose. K, test pit shall be conducted by a competent soil professional uh, in the areas where recharge infiltration is proposed in accordance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards. Uh, if actual uh, soil conditions re- uh, require modifications to the proposed stormwater management design, these modifications will require review and approval by the board. I, and this is obviously incomplete, so I'd I'd request a hold on this, other conditions, noise, music, security. I think we can come back and revisit that discussion. Uh, M, at the discretion of the building commissioner with the concurrence of the planning board, recording of a a certificate of the town clerk and the decision of site plan review at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds may be included as an additional condition precedent to the issuance of any building permit. N, no modifications to the approved site plan shall be made without prior approval of the planning board. Requests for modification shall be submitted to the board in writing and shall in most cases be subject to the same submittal review and hearing procedures as was the original filing. O, duration of approval, site plan approval shall for this project shall lapse after two years from the date of issuance, not including time required to pursue or await determination of an appeal referred to in GL chapter forty-eight, sections eight and seventeen. Unless approved construction work shall have commenced and and proceeded in good faith continuously to completion, except for good cause. In such case, a request for extension of the date of completion shall be submitted in writing to the planning board. And I believe that's it for conditions. So if if we could come back to L, um, I I just have a question for the applicant, what what are your intentions regarding entertainment?
Um, our, our thought is that at least on on the live music, we we do not plan on having any at night. Um, uh, we haven't really fully vetted it because we we know we have to go in front of the uh, select board for approval, but but we do plan on having a a a limited amount of of live music during the days.
What what about uh, recorded music?
Um, there, at least on definitely on the inside, outside, uh, we we plan on on having kind of just background music playing. Um, like you would find it at many restaurants, um, but uh, we we plan on using directional speakers and and low-lying uh, music so that it is very specific to the seating areas and and doesn't bleed off off the property.
And would that also be included in in any uh, petition to the to the select board for an entertainment permit, entertainment license?
Uh, that that would get included in 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 that, but I'm I'm not a hundred percent sure at what point there there, it starts and stops for them if it's live or not, but it would it would obviously get included in in what we would be asking for them.
Yeah, I I mean, it might be um, prudent to have a a condition here, something to the effect that you know, entertainment will is prohibited except pursuant to an entertainment license issued by the Board of Selectment, Select Board, excuse me. Um, and just offer that as a as a suggestion.
You'd like to propose that verbiage now, Larry?
I would.
Okay, Martha, could we uh, construct that?
We can, let's see if I get it right. So Larry, you help me here.
Uh, shall be prohibited uh, except now, let me, hold on one second.
You just said it well, and I
How about this, entertainment is only permitted pursuant to uh, an entertainment license issued by the select board.
Is that live entertainment or just?
Just entertainment in general, I I I believe that it it includes canned music as well. Certainly live entertainment, any kind of shows or the the state statute's very broad in the the definition of entertainment.
Most places, if if I can just uh, throw this in, um, a lot of the background music that's in any retail or restaurant establishment is considered like white noise so that um, it gives the uh, people that are either cus- customers or participants in um, enjoying a meal, a a little background so they don't have an uncomfortableness to like silence between conversation. It's like white noise and most of the time nobody even notices that it's there, they notice when it's not there.
No, that that that's true, what my my biggest concern would be the outside speakers frankly. And uh, you know, um, I I'm sure they're not gonna be playing them full blast with punk rock music. That said, uh, I think the the select board, I mean, rather than us trying to put some sort of noise regulations in place, which I frankly don't think we're very well equipped to do. Since we don't, we don't have a noise by Lauren Town. Um, I think that that's the type of thing that might better be addressed by the select board in in terms of an entertainment license.
Uh, just one quick question.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry, um, I see entertainment on it shall only be uh, pursuant. Now, w- will that include ins- inside, you know, background music, I I just, you know, we obviously plan on?
You need to, you need to, uh, I don't know how the select board would treat that, frankly, I think it's in a gray area. Um, but uh, the it's my, I'm not concerned about the inside music, you know, it it's just, uh, we obviously, we we don't want um, uh, an undue amount of uh, of uh, music, uh, leaving the property, especially later at night.
Correct, it would would it be possible to then just to put outside entertainment there, uh?
Well, again, I don't know what the select board's attitude would be towards it. You know, if if they tell you the inside music is fine, you don't need a license from us, fine.
Okay.
I it it's 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 within their jurisdiction, not ours, that's where I'm going.
Okay.
The clarification, Larry.
Um, that's all I had in in terms of the conditions.
Uh, does anyone have any comments uh, on any of the conditions? Let me just run that through the select, uh, through the uh, board members, Larry, any other comments, sir?
No.
Great, thank you, appreciate you narrating that, uh, George?
No.
Thank you, uh, Leslie?
No.
Uh, thank you, Woody?
No, not at all.
Okay, uh, Mary?
Yeah.
And I just want to wrap, uh, uh, Martha, do we have any considerations that we need to to take into account?
The only other thing that that just occurred to me actually is that um, you know, the applicant has presented himself and his team, um, you know, who are very experienced restaurant operators, and I'm wondering whether there should be any kind of condition addressing a potential um, you know, change either in ownership or management. So I just kind of throw that out as a as a question for consideration.
Some sort of verbiage that that these conditions will be uh, required and ma- maintained by any uh, uh, subsequent uh, um, operators of the premises?
Or or something along the lines of, you know, if if there's any change in in ownership or management that might might be subject to, you know, board review and approval or or something, I'm not quite sure what the language would be, but you know, again, it's been, you know, very specifically stated that this is a very experienced team and
This is do change hands. Right, uh, George, your thoughts on on that?
Well, whatever is contained in the decision would remain in full force and effect. Including the subsequent owners. I would think it would be something like that.
Uh, Larry, what do you, what are your thoughts there?
Yeah, I mean, I I I think um, I I think it's any subsequent owner would would take possession subject to to the decision anyway, I don't think you can defeat the decision by simply transferring ownership. That said, I have no objection to it being stated.
Uh, would you want to propose something for that? I love legal lea-
First, I guess that's, I'm just to to kind of add to that, I guess that might also be a requirement of the liquor license.
That I I was gonna make that comment, uh, we we had to go through that when we bought the liquor store across the street, uh, we 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 had to go in front of the select board for approval for any for that change, uh, so that would be something that would have to go in front of of the select board.
Great, uh, Leslie, you comfortable with that?
Um, I'm comfortable, I am comfortable with that, I think that if there is any exchange any new ownership would have to be vetted, um, it is a standard that if you bring any new management or co-ownership on board, then you have to go back in front of the select board and reapply it for your liquor license. Like the Rusticane had to do about a year or two ago, because they brought somebody else in and um, they were sharing ownership. Um, so yeah, there is a it's it's not a clear-cut thing, they just, they they would have to be vetted in the same way. Not in the same length, but they would still have to be vetted before um, a uh, getting their license.
Um, Woody, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I am.
All right, and Mary?
Yes, I I had assumed this was a done deal, a beta complete, um, what we're doing tonight, that this decision would be sort of set in stone, if you will.
Um, okay. Okay, um, okay, I think we're all set with
Actually, um, Greg, I got one, one question.
Yes, Steve?
Um, just what is it, item F? Is that, is that new, is that just a um, construction inspections by an outside can, uh, you know, paid agent? Is that new for the town, because the last one I did, it we, that was not a requirement?
That's pretty, pretty typical. It would probably be mostly, mostly for the stormwater management and utilities.
Okay, well, the new report, actually, the utilities be all inspected by the new report, yes.
That's true, that's true.
So really, it'd just be the stormwater?
The stormwater, right, so if we, you know, if we have a schedule, we can, you know, determine when those inspections would be appropriate.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Get a, you know, you get an estimate to cover those, but that's pretty typical.
Okay.
All right, Martha, I think we can we're good with our our draft, and the last page is just signatures, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect, so we can probably stop screen sharing, if that's okay, great, um, and um, is there, uh, I I think probably at this time, Martha, uh, have there been any any other additional comments or questions from uh, any individuals?
So as noted earlier, we did receive um, an email from uh, Deb Rogers, our health director yesterday stating that she's reviewed the entire proposed plan for the Plum Island Sunset Club, I do not see any public health issues, the plan is approved as submitted, and that was forwarded to all of you. And then there have been several emails from Steve Manchin on Sunday, the twenty-fifth, Monday, the twenty-sixth, and and today.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, let's uh, open it up for public comment, if there are any questions or public comments, uh, please use the raise hand function as we discussed. And we will try to address any questions or comments uh, that there might be at this point in time uh, on this.
I see somebody named Ryan raised his hand first.
Hey, Ryan, if you could identify yourself, your first name, your last name, and your address, please.
Great, uh, thank you very much, uh, my name is uh, Ryan O'Hagan. Uh, sixty-two Fordham Way in Newbury, uh, short stroll from the um, proposed site, uh, I just wanted to voice my uh, strong support for the site. Uh, I think it's appropriate for the location and appropriate in a post-COVID world. And would be a great addition uh, to the island, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ryan, the uh, would appreciate your participation tonight and your comments, great, um, could we have next, Martha?
Uh, next is uh, Steve Manchin.
Okay, Steve, uh, name and address?
Uh, this is Steve Manchin on Fourteenth Street, Plum Island. A couple of things, let me uh, start by saying I support the idea of a restaurant. Though the comments I want to offer up are some critical points in terms of the operation. But again, I want to emphasize that I support the concept. Um, let me start where you began, which was some mention of the uh, letter from the Board of of the Health Inspector, which I hadn't seen, but I do have to offer up that last night I had the opportunity to talk to the chairman of the Board of Health, who is also an elected official, just like you are. And his reaction when I was talking to him about the project was that he didn't think porta-potties would fly at all before the board. Now, I don't know who makes the ultimate decision, whether it's Deb Rogers, whether it's the Board of Health itself. But uh, you know, Steve Fram indicated to me, and I only have it verbally, that uh, porta-potties weren't gonna be the way to go for the outside uh, rest uh, outside waste disposal issues. And I think that deserves some clarification, especially if the Board of Health isn't, as a body, needs to weigh in. I've been a long-term proponent of having a real flush toilet kind of operation. Uh, I call it the roll-away option, which is something that can be trucked in and trucked out, and you can pump, bring water to the system. And it can have sinks inside a trailer-like structure, and I think it's much more sanitary, particularly when you start considering a hundred and forty people outside the uh, the restaurant proper. So again, I'm, I'll ask the board to um, check in with the Board of Health and see what they have to say as the Board of Health. I can go on unless you want to engage in a dialogue with me on that point.
Uh, so Martha, from my understanding, the Board of Health has the say on that aspect, is that correct?
To be honest, I don't, um, I I, you know, my understanding was that these kinds of things uh, were really within the jurisdiction of the health agent and the health inspector, and the health agent has now become the health director. So, you know, she's the one who's done the review and granted the approval.
So, um, Steve, I can ask the board members their personal opinion, but what I'm hearing from uh, Martha is that it comes down to the uh, but the health agent, um, and health agent has signed off on this, but let me just run it through the board members to see what their thoughts are, uh, Larry, your thoughts?
No, I I agree, and and we, you know, the best evidence we have is what we have from the health agent, and nothing we do here is going to limit the uh, the uh, authority of the Board of Health to take any action they feel necessary in the future. So I'm fine with the record as it is.
Okay, uh, George?
Uh, the health agent, it has the the authority to issue the permit. Uh, the health agent has the authority to issue the permit and I would go along with that.
Oh, thank you. Woody?
I, I agree. The health agents, that's on the health agent.
Uh, Leslie?
I agree with the health agent that, you know, that's what her job is and, you know, I will stand by it.
On Mary?
Uh, yes, health agent should be.
Uh, okay, that's, so Steve, that's kind of where the board is on that position. Did you have some other questions?
Yes, I do. And just let me say that I think it will be important to check in with Board of Health. I don't see. That whether we had rollaways or porta potties having to flip in the decision-making process will affect the ultimate decision. But I would encourage you, Mr. Chairman, to touch bases with your counterpart chairman in the Board of Health. It's just as Martha doesn't make decisions for the planning board. It may be that Deb doesn't do it for the Board of Health. So as a courtesy, I hope you do that. I think the second thing has to do with hours of operation in general. I note that the planning board gave a lot of deference to nearby abutters regarding the golf course in terms of hours of operation. And I would submit that it might be appropriate to do that for this particular operation where you might have, you know, 100 plus people. Outside and if a liquor license is successfully. Obtained, it could present a noise issue for a residential area. So where I end up going with this is that I think the hours of operation and some of this will spill over to the select board, I understand. But being open until 11 o'clock at night with, you know, perhaps I'll say 100 people in round numbers outside, I think that's too much. And I would suggest that instead of being open to 11 for the outside seating. That the board consider the route they took with the golf center, which was tied to sunset throughout the year for outside seating. That would not stop inside seating at the restaurant from going on to 11, but I do have a lot of concern about the. Noise and disturbances to the neighborhood because of the noise that comes from it. I'm not talking about a noise ordinance, but rather just. You know, the impact in the nearby residential area, which I think warrants a more limited time for outside seating. So that's my comment.
Okay, well, let me just help with that one. So the golf center scenario was a very different scenario because it was dependent on lighting and. Having the ability to have lighting available. And so that decision is very different than this particular situation. Also, just for clarification, we probably should, you know, not try to compare apples and tangerines because they're different here. There are different projects with different requirements. I just want to get a feel from the board as well with regards to that. Larry?
And no, I, I agree a hundred percent with your comment, Pete.
Uh, thanks. Uh, George?
Uh, I agree, Peter. I think the. Would a select, or the select board will have some say in the hours anyway, but this is, we may say that the hours here are available. Or can be used subject to the select boards determination of the license and whatever they may say in the hours. So there may be a conflict. We really subject to them. So we can condition our hours and the decision dependent upon the decisions of the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, excuse me.
Uh, thank you for that, uh, that insight, George. Woody?
I, I agree with, uh, what George just said about. The hours, you know, if the select would says that the hours can't be that late. Till 11 o'clock, they can't be that late. And I do understand Steve's, um, just manager. With the noise because people outside can get yow-yow in certain environments and. Noise could be a problem down there, but. As far as the. Hours of operation, the indoor. The indoor setup, I don't see a problem with it going until 10, 10:30 or 11 o'clock. But the outdoor operation. They, they should be very mindful to the noise, I guess, is what I'm getting.
Appreciate that very much, Woody. Thank you. Uh, Leslie?
As far as the hours of operation, are we only discussing the hours of operation as far as? Food service or food and beverage service? If it's food service and, and you change, are you gonna, are we discussing? Two different timeframes. So when does the kitchen close and when does the bar close? Those would be the things that I would look at. If the kitchen closes at 10 o'clock, then the. Bar closes at 10 o'clock. They should probably be on. Like the same parallel line with one another so that it's consistent to the customers as they come in and, you know, it. Doesn't throw anybody off as far as when they arrive, what they expect.
For clarification, Leslie, I think, uh, Martha, tho- those are, the, the hours of operation are directed by the liquor license. Is that right? And by the select board? Is that right?
Yeah, the, well, the liquor license, the, the hours that they can serve alcohol are, are really in the select board's purview. And my understanding from talking to Julie today. Is that the state essentially sets that at 11 to 11, correct? So the, the, the select board could actually go later, but the 11 to 11 is the. You know, kind of the, the state default.
Uh, Leslie, does that answer your concern?
It does. And I knew that. I mean, the, you know, the applicant can always apply for, you know, a special permit for a special occasion, but. Uh, yeah, the state is 11 to 11. I think it, the only exclusion is on Sunday where it becomes noon time to 11. But, um, you know, to. Hours of operation should include every aspect. Food service and, and beverage service. So. That's how I stand on that.
Um, Mary, your, your thoughts?
Yes, I understand what Steve is saying and I read his comments. Um, I don't see the comparison between this project and both.
Okay, thank you. Steve, uh, do you have other questions for the board?
Two more. Uh, one has to do with trip generation and I realize that reference was made by the applicant to, uh, you know, traffic manual that's out there. Well, in my career, I've dealt with a lot of generic documents and they're fine as far as they go. But I can't believe, though I haven't looked at the document itself, to see if it really covers the situation with the traffic that occurs at that intersection. I think that would be appropriate, you know, given the wildlife refuge, given beachgoers. Given people that live down Old Point Road, to say nothing of people that live down off of Northern Boulevard, the traffic is going to be, is already congested. Uh, it was Saturday when we had a, a good day. The traffic was backing up on Northern Boulevard as it, as it were. I think that there may be an underestimation of the impact of the traffic at the restaurant resulting from. The restaurant as another add-on. It's a sort of like, you know, the death of a thousand cuts of the straw that broke the camel's back in terms of, uh. You know, traffic impact. And I would strongly urge, though not to delay approval of the project, but to require. That there be a real live site-specific traffic study being done during high traffic. During high traffic season and that may influence subsequent renewals and hours of operation. Whether it be something under the purview of the planning board or the selectmen, but I think we need to get the data. And follow the traffic science by getting a traffic study. Again, I want to emphasize that when the master plan committee was meeting, there was some discussion about a traffic study that was done by the. Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, I believe. And it was pointed out by one of the members that the timeframe for that study, which I think is relied upon in your decision-making. The timeframe for that study was done during a low traffic time of year on the island. So its relevance. Even in that instance is not particularly on point. So that's something I'd ask you to consider. Being a future activity, not to stop an approval tonight, but rather to condition it.
Uh, Martha, did you want to say something?
Yeah, may I just say something? Um, the MVP C did do a traffic study down there on Plum Island Turnpike, just west of Sunset. Uh, starting in August 5th, 2019, and it was 20, 24 hours basically for five or six days. So. That would have been a fairly high traffic time and. That information was provided to the, the applicant.
Yeah, and actually we use that as far as between that. That information was used and also the input from the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. That whole, the re- reorganization of the, the thought was the reorganization of the, of course, it's going to be traffic. It's going to be very busy on sunny weekends. Nothing we can do about that. But in reorganizing it so that we took a left onto Old Point. With the entry there, cars coming onto the island and cars going to. The reservation can still make those movements. Well, if, if the person looking to get into the restaurant is queued there. There's plenty of room for a car to pass by and go straight through to Beach Center or to, to take a right. So I think the, that, that move. Probably help, you know, would help alleviate any of the ancillary traffic. That would be going to this restaurant during high, during a high volume time.
And I appreciate that. The, uh, study I was referencing or the meeting of the master plan committee, I believe, predated. The one that Martha was citing. So I was going with the information I have, but I still. Have a suspicion that the traffic is going to be ever worse. And that's my concern as a resident.
I, I appreciate and understand, Steve. Let me just. An attempt from where the board is. Uh, Larry, your comments on this, because I know you had some concerns or some thoughts?
Uh, yeah. Uh, there's no question traffic is going to increase. I mean, we know that. Um, and I think we've done what is really open to us to do in terms of rerouting the traffic. So let's say there's a traffic study done and, and, and we do learn that during peak hours, what, four to six, that the traffic is going to be everything anticipated. Not sure what we do with that. Really, the, 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 the issue really goes to the, to the. To the suitability of this site for the proposed use and that ship has sailed. You know, the CBA has. Uh, granted a special permit for the use and, uh, I, I just don't know that any further traffic study is going to give us much more information than, than we have now in terms of what we need.
Uh, thank you, Larry. George, your thoughts?
Uh, a traffic study is very objective and traffic on the island operates under subjective purposes of. Either going to the ice cream stand, heading down to the beach, mostly to the beach, down to the preserve. And I don't think it just focuses. Because of additional traffic caused by this restaurant. Uh, I just don't see how deeply this may affect it at all.
Thank you, George. Uh, Woody?
There's a lot of other destinations on the island. So I agree that, that, the, uh, traffic study might not. Really tell us it much more than we already know and traffic's traffic. It happens and it, it comes and goes and. It's about the rules of the road and just. Everybody getting in and out of there and on nice days in the summertime. Go out and gets crazy. I don't think that this restaurant is going to cause. That much more traffic or gridlock down there, but that's my pers- personal opinion.
Uh, thank you, Woody. Uh, Leslie?
I think that the way it has been rerouted to enter on, off the Boulevard and back to exit off of. Old Point is going to be the most convenient way to do it. Now, there's an extensive amount of traffic down there. Uh, I've been down there three week, three Saturdays in a row. Um, the least amount of traffic comes off of Old Point. Most amount of traffic comes. From the mainland and turns on to. Go, go to the reservation or go down to the beach. So I, I, I think the traffic situation will be, will be handled very well.
You, Leslie. Uh, Mary, your thoughts? But you're muted, Mary. There we go.
I apologize. Um, I'll quote Larry and just say that the ship has definitely sailed. Although he didn't say definitely, but ship has sailed.
Thank you, Mary. Um, Steve, did you have one more que- question or comment?
One other quick one, which is to support one of the conditions that have been put into the document. That is that parking shall be only for the restaurant and not for other commercial activities as a parking lot. And that I hope will remain and not be taken out. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate your comments and your continued participation with the boards. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep. Uh, who do we have next, Martha?
Oh, next we have Jeremiah Murphy.
Uh, Jeremiah Murphy, uh, name and address, please. Thanks. Uh, you'll need to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name's Jeremiah Murphy. I currently reside at 81 Southern Boulevard. Uh, my family owns property on Fourteenth Street and 163 Old Point Road, which I'm a part owner of. Uh, my family has been at both these properties for over 60 years. And over the years, we've seen the island change. Personally, the development of this plot, you know, you know, it was going to happen. It wasn't always going to stay a gas station. Um, not against the development of the prop- property, just this particular use because of the traffic concerns. And the noise and the other concerns that are come, going to come from a full producing kitchen. Um, I thank the board for taking the time to really evaluate this proposal and, you know, have multiple meetings. You know, I would politely disagree on the traffic. Um, as Steve had mentioned, it's already at a bottleneck at times in the summer, backing up to the bridge. I think it's going to compound it. Um, and maybe things can be done by the developer to improve that intersection. Uh, one thing that should be discussed, Old Point Road in that intersection is used by. Dozens and dozens of pedestrians, bicyclists, skateboarders, people walking their dogs. If improvements could be made where those driveways are and around the property to ensure pedestrians can safely. Traverse around this property. Uh, their traffic engineer talked about there being plenty of room for traffic to go around. Well, if you're going to have pedestrians, people with baby carriages and all that, there, it's not as open as, uh. That was stated. Um, also if an improvement, um, for Old Point Road. Uh, there's tons and tons of traffic of people going down Old Point Road. Uh, just wondering where it all goes to. It's approximately a mile long. They come down to then where the cul-de-sac is. Turn around there, then head back their way. Um, if maybe, you know, there's an existing dead end sign there. If one could, uh, you know, maybe possibly put up signage to say local traffic only. You know, and trying to maintain, you know, uh, Old Point Road is just, it's a gem on the island. You know, where you have the marsh, the sunsets and really to add a, a quite a bit of traffic to this road. And people are going to be naturally curious, you know, to go down there and see where it leads to. So, yeah, I know the, the horse has left the barn per se, but I hope the board takes some additional steps. To guarantee the safety of pedestrians and all those that use this area on quite a bit of basis. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah. We appreciate you speaking tonight and addressing the board. Uh, Martha, is there something that we could do with regards to highway, you know, maybe no outlet or. Uh, something of that or that nature? Is that something we could look into?
Um, I think that would probably need to be brought up with the select board and then the DPD Director.
Okay.
One other thing I might, might add here is that, um, you know, MVP C is, is. Sort of continuously looking at areas through town. And if in the future there are issues here, this might be another area for them to study again.
Good. Uh, thanks for that. That helps me information. Who do we? Good. Uh, thanks for that. Uh, that helps me information. Uh, who do we have next?
Uh, next is Angelica.
Angelica, could, could you give first name, uh, last name and address, please?
Angelica Reno, so 10 Old Point Road. My, I have a few concerns. I mean, I've lived here since October 1st. October 5th, the access road was actually being made by an excavator. I then asked in October, is there going to be a fence? I have two small children. I have a backyard. I have a side yard. At this point, I've had excavators, sledgehammering, bobcats, backhoes, concrete smashing, crew people all up and down the yard with, I'm still uh, being, asking this thing the most important question, considering that it's affecting me directly and my children. When is this fence going to be placed? Now, I don't understand how you got, how people can literally deconstruct a house, move dumpsters, move porta potties, sledgehammer, jackhammering everything around, literally box me in. I literally have now a tarp fence with holes four feet from my open door. And I've gone in the response, the fence is going to be put up soon. That was in October. Three weeks ago, I was told that it was gonna, the, the fence was already paid. It's going to be a couple of weeks. Not a problem. I understand these are difficult times with COVID and everything. I then spoke to Jeff yesterday. Oh, it's going to be three to six weeks. I then spoke to Vincent this morning. It's going to be a week. What I need to know, again, my concern is my children. Like I told Vincent and I told Martha today, that's my only concern. I have people literally using the spigot and attached to my house, entering my yard with not even as a common courtesy of knocking on my door and saying, listen, there's going to be construction. My house literally is shaking from seven, way past five o'clock on numerous occasions. On two occasions, I've actually had to contact the Newbury Police Department because there's been sledgehammering going on at six o'clock in the morning. If construction hasn't started, what is, what is the actual, like, when is construction going to start? And what is that furthermore going to entail is my concern. And furthermore, I understand that we've, everybody has spoken about safety issues with concerns of the employees and everything, but my stress level, obviously, being a mother of two young children is you have an excavator, bobcats, stuff being cemented, being put into the road. And all I have is literally a tarp separating. And I have a porta potty 10 feet from my grill. And I keep getting all these mixed, like, these mixed signals and messages. And with that fence, are we going to have yellow safety cemented poles on the opposite side? In preparation of, God forbid, that somebody driving into Old Point Road, into the, into the restaurant is going to smash and, you know, God forbid, injuring somebody on my side of the yard. That is honestly what I'm here for.
Thank you, Angelica. Let me ask a couple of questions to Martha. Martha, has site work been done or just demolition?
Oh, demolition, demolition of the uh, old auto repair shop in the house has been done. There's been some work in inside the garage prep work. Um, I actually had a conversation with Vince this morning about this and, and have also spoken with Peter Bennett. Um, there was some plumbing work that was done outside the garage. My understanding is that there was a hole that was dug and there was a bobcat that was kind of smoothing things out. And I think Vince may actually be able to address the work that's been done.
Yeah, just for clarification, because uh,
Yeah, so.
Last time, it's site, uh, just demolition, but no site work. Right? Was that correct?
Correct. As part, as part of the demolition, the, the, the surrounding asphalt on this, on, a- at those buildings was, was removed as well. The, there was a, a hole dug a- as part of, we, we've received a plumbing permit from, from Peter for the interior. And uh, an inspection occurred uh, yesterday or two days ago. Uh, and in order to fill in the trenching that was done inside, which is where the pounding occurred from saw cutting the concrete. Uh, he needed to have an outlet outside because he can't fill in the sand without capping it outside, otherwise he can't get to it. So, so we did do that and, and we did install um, a, a uh, a temporary fence there. Unfortunately, um, you know, COVID with, and, and, and what's been going on with lumber. When we were promised our fencing and when we have gotten it is uh, even though it was, it was uh, told it was going to be a lot sooner. We were told today in discussions that, that the first fencing will arrive uh, next week. And, and I mentioned to Angelica, she, that will be the first section that will receive permanent fencing as opposed to the, the temporary fencing that's, that's currently there right now.
So I, I understand that we had this conversation last meeting. Uh, Vince, would it make, make sense that nothing else happened at that site until your fence is up?
Well, there, there is a temp fence up.
No, uh, this wooden fence to provide more of a barrier. That makes sense, you know?
The, that, that was my goal. Like I mentioned at the last meeting, uh, the one issue with that is that what I, I, what I'm being told is that I'm going to be receiving in stages, the fencing. So, so my priority is, is obviously to do it back there between, between uh, those two properties. And then, and then do the, the remainder of the property immediately thereafter. But I, I honestly don't have a timeline of when it will all be there. But in the meantime, we do have a temp fence that, that is been put up.
Perfect. Let me, the board members, if they have a concern with regards to safety regarding fencing. Uh, Larry, your thoughts?
No, I mean, I, I, I completely appreciate the point she's making. Uh, but Vincent, uh, how long do you think the buildup is going to take? When do you think you're going to be up and running, have everything in place, including the fencing?
Uh, uh, honestly, uh, we, we're hoping in the next three to four weeks. So, you know, even the interior, uh, the bulk of anything uh, uh, heavy has been finished inside, which was really cutting concrete. Now it's just putting that back on. And um, um, the, the uh, replacement furnace in, has been installed. Um, a, a lot of the interior work there has been done. So, so um, you know, it's the site stuff. But you know, I've got a few crews ready to go, assuming, you know, we're given the green light to, to do that. So it, it is not expected to, to, to happen long. And any work that needs to happen behind that building um, would not take more than a week.
All right. So at least we're dealing with a relatively short period of time. And I'm sure you'll be sensitive to the, to the neighbors' concerns.
100%. I, I, I apologized for not having the fence sooner. I, I, I actually was even talking to my, to the guy that's going to be doing the landscaping and telling him to go to Home Depot and just pick up whatever fencing is available if needed, just to put something temporarily. I'm, I'm, I'm very um, sensitive to that.
Thank, thanks, Larry. Uh, George?
No comments.
Okay. Uh, Woody?
Uh, no comment.
Um, Leslie?
No comment.
Okay, uh, Mary?
No comment.
Okay, great. Uh, all right. Uh, I think you, uh, Vince, uh, we've, we've discussed the sensitivity. So we appreciate that. Wonderful. Um. Martha, who do we have next for uh, questions or comments?
George Seamus.
George, uh, first name, last name and address, please.
Uh, yes, George Seamus, uh, ADB Southern Boulevard. Um, an inv- investor in some other properties on the island. I'm, I'm a mere rookie up here in the last five years, but obviously seen a lot of development uh, on the island. And um, it's like anything, uh, the secret's out and it's such a wonderful and beautiful place. And to me, it's a matter of managing it. I'm a big believer in judging people by their actions. And I have frequented the restaurants um, that the applicants have as well as the store and um, the cottage uh, on island. And based on how they've managed their properties, based on the service levels and how they've carried their business makes me an advocate and supporter for this development. Um, I don't know how you avoid traffic. Uh, one of the things of us moving up from Tops Hill to this area was it was convenient and easy. And yes, the coming down our way, especially with the reservation, with the piping clovers and the backups that happen at times, it can be a little hectic. But nowhere near as hectic to go to, to Maine or to Cape Cod. So I think it's just a matter of managing expectations. Uh, I think there's a, a huge value in improving what we have on this island and in this area. And I think that is to the benefit of all. So as a uh, someone who's living in the area and calling it my uh, my long-term stay for both my wife and I, as we've become empty nesters and, and, and continuing to invest here for my family to grow. Um, I'm a major advocate to watch uh, business continue to grow out here, properties to continue to improve and to make this better for all. And, and that's all I have to say tonight. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, George. We appreciate you participating tonight and your comments to the board. Um, Martha, who do we have next?
Uh, Jeremiah Murphy has raised his hand again.
Um, Jeremiah, uh, come back to us, please.
Okay. I just want to mention, uh, just to clarify, um, the fence that uh, Vincent re- referred to that's out there, that's existing, is uh, fencing similar to what you would put next to hay bales? It's not actually any fencing. And hopefully, you know, the situation that his neighbor has been going through has been going on for quite some time. And, you know, uh, my hope is that it'll be rectified soon. That's all.
Uh, thank you, Jeremiah. I appreciate that comment. Um, Martha, any, uh, who do we have next?
Uh, Sue's iPad. So, so if you can identify yourself and give your address, please. And you'll need to unmute yourself as well.
There we go. Okay, I'm Sue McClarath. I live on 310th Street. And I totally am in support of this project. Um, there's been a lot of things that have been said tonight that are kind of interesting to me. Um, like um, about the porta potties. Uh, they work at the center, so why won't they work somewhere else? Um, they, we get more people down at the beach than, than what they'll probably see. And, and um, I don't see a problem with that. And traffic, we've always had traffic problems out here on the island. Um, especially on very, very nice days. You can see traffic bottlenecked everywhere. And I don't think that this place is going to cause any more trouble than what we normally see. And as far as the construction and the, the sites, we've all put up with construction here on the island. It's, it's grown so much since I've lived here. And you know, I've had um, pylons in the neighborhood being driven into the ground. And I've had pictures and things fall off shelves. It's just what happens. And you just live with it because you know that, that people are, are building and, and doing better for the island. And I think that um, Vincent and his group has done an, an amazing job out here on the island. They've brought such um, value to our island. And um, I expect that this to be just the same. So I am totally support of this project. Then I thank you for listening to me tonight.
Sue, thank you very much for your comments and for participating tonight. Uh, the board does appreciate you very much. Thank you. Um, Martha, who do we have next?
Uh, next is Dan. Uh, sorry if I mispronounced your name, Graevak.
Very close. Uh, so Dan Graevak, 750 A Street. Just a couple of comments. I, I really am excited about this project. I think that Vince, Jeff and the team have really done a good job of being considerate of the construction, the neighbors, the traffic, and they've done all the right things. This is going to be a welcome addition to the island to have another place, another option to go, um, a place to walk to, right? We don't have a lot of places we can walk to and have a beverage. Talking about driving home from Newburyport. And yes, there's minor inconveniences, but they're short term. Can you ma- can you name another restaurant locally that has gone from nothing to full-blown restaurant in a month? I mean, we're talking about, this is going to be up in three or four weeks. So it's progress. It's exciting. And I'm fully supportive of this uh, uh, project. And I'm looking forward to having a drink after dark outside and using the porta potties. Thank you.
All right, Dan. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, board appreciate your comments and your participation tonight. Thank you. Uh, Martha, who do we have next?
Uh, James Stewart is next.
Uh, Jim, uh, name and address, please. Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, Jim Stewart, 22 Old Point Road. Uh, just a quick comment on Angelica's situation. I'm not against the restaurant, but you know, we've all been impacted by the pandemic. And there's business risk with everything we do. Why would you give a pass on the fence? Make them get the right fence up, do the right thing, and then proceed with construction. I don't, I don't get it. Thank you.
Uh, Jim, thanks very much for your comments. Uh, the board appreciates your participation tonight. Thank you. Um, Martha?
Uh, Steve Manchin has raised his hand again.
Okay, Steve, what do you have?
Here we go. Took me a while to unmute. Um, just coming back as a courtesy to the planning board, I wanted you to know that I did fire off a message to Steve Fram, again, you know, the elected chair of the Board of Health, asking the question about uh, you know, who's on first when it comes to deciding whether porta potties or a real flush toilet is appropriate for the outside function. So again, I'm just trying to inform you to be transparent that I did ask Steve to contact you, just as I asked you to contact Steve. So with that, I'll lower my hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is, is that de taunt in work, in the works? Do I remember that word correctly, de taunt?
Yeah, I remember that.
Careful words with negotiation between boards. Okay. Um, Martha, do you have any other hands?
I do not see any other. Oh, uh, Jan Forrest is raising her hand physically.
All right, Jan Forrest. Uh, please, uh, name, address and flow over your.
Janice Forrest, 72 Old Point Road. I'm not really against the restaurant. I think it's a nice idea. Um, obviously I live on Old Point Road and I'm going to be, I'm sure, affected by um, the traffic. Um, my question, I guess, is during this construction, is there going to be some kind of police detail or something to direct traffic? Because there's not a whole lot of room to maneuver between the marsh and where the um, stakes with the black paper, uh, cloth on them to, you know, give you any room to maneuver. If there's going to be construction vehicles of any more kind down there. And um, I also have a question about, we talked about before about the right of way, it, like, going into the right of way with plantings and things to that effect on the corner. And I wondered, I haven't seen any changed plans have has anything been done, discussed about that?
Sure, let me try to answer the question. Uh, the, the applicant pulled uh, the development uh, or, or project back to be out of the right of way. So they won't be in the right of way. And that was done, I think, after our second meeting. So uh, they were responsive to that concern. Um, and the first question was regards to details. Now Martha, all site, all, all work needs to be contained on the site. And if it goes offsite, then will there be special uh, requirements for that?
Um, I don't know for sure. I would assume that it would probably be appropriate to contact the police for detail or something like that. I don't know what the construct, if there's a construction plan that's been uh, set up or how you'd be staging things.
Um, I, I, I can address that a bit. Uh, there, there is ample room uh, on the east side of the property, which is the parking field. Um, uh, for, for any and all construction vehicles to, to be handled there. We don't anticipate needing any vehicles to, to be uh, uh, between the, the, the current uh, black fencing that's there and, and the marsh. But i- if, if we needed to, we would certainly uh, reach out to Martha, the, 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 the Police Department to, to make sure they were aware of it.
Yeah, I guess my only other comment would be that the distance between the house next door and the back of the current garage seems really narrow to me to, to get, have cars going back and forth through there. So, but I'm sure it's been discussed and it must be a legal width. It, I noticed today coming down with everything down, it's somehow everything is more visible because there's no more buildings around. It's just very close to me to that house. So I was just curious if, but I guess with the fence, eventually the fence being up and with metal security bars reinforcing it, it will, I guess will work. Otherwise, the rest of it looks to me like it would be, it's going to be, you know, a nice, a nice venue when it's all said and done.
Okay, a second from that question to Steve, who can answer the dimensional requirements and what he has put into the plans. Steve, do you want to just address that real quick?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we went through the, it's a one-way, we have a 15-foot wide axis. Um, which is uh, Um, which is um, the requirement for a one-way, one-way travel. Um, and then I think we have between the fence, you know, the the fence in the back of the building, we have a couple of feet on either side. So we have an extra four feet of buffer, two feet to the building, two feet to the fence. So we have ample, as far as for the one-way traffic flow, it's ample and meets the meets the regular town regulations.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Janice, thanks very much for participating in your questions tonight. The board does appreciate it. Thank you.
Forward to seeing what we end up with because it should be kind of fun.
Great. Uh, Martha, who do we have next?
Uh, Patrick Pollard.
Patrick, a name and address, please.
Hey, how are you? I am Patrick Pollard. I'm on 24 Dartmouth Way. And um, I just wanted to add my voice and support of this project. Um, since this family has taken over the cottage, I think they've been amazing ambassadors, um, not only to visitors of the island, but ambassadors on behalf of the island to visitors. Um, I think it's been awesome seeing that business grow um, and represent Plum Island in such a positive way. And I'm really excited to see the restaurant do the same and even more.
Patrick, uh, thanks very much for your comments to the board. Uh, we do appreciate it and we're glad that you're here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Joyce Macheros.
Uh, Joyce, name and address, please. Thanks so much.
And you'll need to unmute yourself, please.
Joyce, yes, unmute. Thank you. Are you not unmuted yet? Perfect.
There we are. Thank you for being patient. I'm Joyce Macheros from 5 Sunset Drive. And I'm one of the former owners of the property that's being developed now as the Sunset Club. And I want to let everybody know that I'm in favor of this. I think it will be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. And I'm looking forward myself to being able to walk there and have a bite to eat with my friends. So so uh, that's how I feel about the situation. Thank you.
Joyce, thanks very much. The board appreciate your your support and your participation tonight. Thank you very much. Uh, Martha, who do we have next?
Uh, Katie Fahy Anderson.
Uh, Katie, address, please. Name and address. Thanks.
Hi, Katie Fahy, 350th Street. Um, I grew up here. My parents have been here for over 40 years and this is always home to me and now it'll be home to my children. And I just wanted to echo some of the other positive comments about this project. Huge advocate. They really run a first-class operation at the cottages and um, they've been such a welcomed addition to the community here. And I think it's really important that they're locals, you know, they grew up here too. And it's definitely important for them to look at the longevity of everything they're doing to the island. So really excited to, you know, have another local option to support here and uh, can't see what, um, can't wait to see what they create.
Um, Katie, thanks very much for participating tonight and giving your comments to the board. Thank you. Um, Martha, who do we have next?
Next is Kristen Callahan.
Uh, Kristen, uh, name and address, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Callahan. I am at 30 Harvard Way. I'm just going to make it short and sweet. I just wanted to voice my support and I really look forward to um, enjoying the restaurant.
That's great. That is short and sweet. And Kristen, thanks very much. The board appreciate your comments and your participation tonight. Great. Uh, do we have anyone else, Martha?
I'm not seeing any yellow raised hands. I'm scanning, scanning the got a lot of people without video here.
Yeah.
So I don't see anybody else. Okay.
Um, uh, let's see. Um, did the, I want to see if the board members have any other comments or discussions or questions uh, regards to the decision, um, or what we've been presented or in the draft deliberation. So, uh, Larry, you sir?
No, I'm I'm good.
Okay, um, uh, George?
No, I have no further comments.
Okay, uh, Leslie?
No further comments?
Okay, um, Woody?
No further comments? No?
Uh, Mary?
No.
Okay, um, all right. If there's no further questions or comments, um, I would uh, ask for a motion uh, to grant a site planner approval uh, for the proposed Plum Island Sunset Club uh, at 2 and 8 uh, our Old Point Road. Uh, to approve the decision as it was amended this evening.
I move to approve the grant of a site plan approval for the proposed Plum Island Sunset Club at 2 and 8 our Old Point Road and to approve the decision as amended at the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, George?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Mary? Okay, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
You, uh, George, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
I thank you. Woody, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Leslie, how do you vote, ma'am?
Yes.
Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the chair is also uh, in favor as well. Um, okay. Um, Martha, do we have any other housekeeping with regards to this?
Uh, so what we'll need to do is arrange to get, uh, I will clean it up, make the amendments, um, get the clean version ready and let you all know when it's ready for signature. And then that it will be filed with the town clerk as soon as it's signed and there's a 20-day appeal period.
Thank you. Um, I would entertain a motion then to close this public hearing.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Uh, there's a motion. Thank you, Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Woody. There's a second. Any discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, George?
None.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
None.
Discussion, uh, Mary? Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, Larry, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
You, uh, George?
Yes.
Sir, Woody?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Ma'am, uh, Mary, how do you feel?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Excellent. I love enthusiasm. The chair is also in favor uh, as well. Um, okay. Uh, that being said, um, I would ask for a motion uh, to adjourn our meeting tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Leslie. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Larry. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, George?
No.
Okay, uh, discussion, Woody?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Any discussion, Mary? I hope not. Okay, uh, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. George?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Appreciate that. Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Uh, wonderful, Mary?
Yes.
Like great, and the chair is in favor. Uh, I want to thank the applicant for um, their patience through this process. I want to thank the public for its participation in this process. The board really uh, does a value opinions and comments. Uh, Martha, I want to thank you for your patience with this and getting this all together. Uh, and with that, I think we'll say a good evening, folks. Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks, Pete.
Good night. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Night.